For those that have joined us online, we'll be starting in just a few minutes.
For those that have joined us online, we'll be starting in just a few minutes.
For those that have joined us online, we'll be starting in just a few minutes.
Yeah, you can go ahead and flip those on. All right, we'll go ahead and call our regular meeting of the Wayne County Board of Education to order. It's 6:05. And if you stand, we'll say the pledge. Dennis will ask you to lead this this evening.
Let the record show that all board members are present in person this evening.
We will begin with our first item on the agenda, our recognitions, if we have any.
No recognitions scheduled this evening. Our recognitions start at our next meeting. I believe we're going to be out at Spring Valley High School for some student recognitions.
At 5:30.
Yeah, we're starting that meeting a little bit early because of the recognition.
Perfect, and no presentations this evening?
No presentations.
All right, let's move on to our good news section.
Yeah, I want to mention that courses, we moved the board meeting to September 10th because last night at the West Virginia Culture Center, the Department of Education held their event, a celebration of excellence in education, where they honored the 2026 teachers and 2026 service personnel of the year. And the top five in each category were invited to the Culture Center yesterday evening. And I was able to go up with Nicole Craft, a teacher from East Lynn, who was the county's teacher of the year, and then was the finalist in the top five for state teacher of the year. And so we are certainly proud of her. Out of those five, they select one to represent the state at the national level. And a teacher from Ohio County received that honor this year. But anytime you're in that top five, you, that's a fantastic recognition.
Second rate accomplishment, yeah.
Yeah, we're very proud of Nicole, so I just wanted to mention that.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Anyone else, anything else? All right, moving on to our informational items, regular board meeting on Tuesday, September 23rd, beginning at 5:30 at Spring Valley High School. Again, that's for student recognitions, so we'll begin at 5:30. Construction project updates?
Yeah, we're kind of in a slow time for the construction projects because we have things wrapping up and then we have things that are still in a design phase but haven't started. So not a lot of updates this evening. I do want to mention that the Wayne High School athletic roofs have been completed. We also did the small roofing project at the Spring Valley High School football field for the electrical room there. The same contractors completed that project. And that was a minor project, so, but it's complete. We have a, we have the ceiling and striping of the Wayne, or I'm sorry, the Spring Valley High School soccer athletic field. We're trying to get that done. They tried to do it this past Sunday, but after all the rain Saturday, it was not dry enough. So we've rescheduled for the 20th. So I'll keep you updated on that. Our bleacher repair, I had informed you, we had had inspections done on our bleachers and there were some problems found. And those repairs are underway. We have prioritized the football fields because it's currently football season. But we've got a, we've got a few sets of bleachers, mainly down at Wayne High School, that are blocked off for the current time. But our crews are finishing up Tulsa tomorrow and then they will be moving on to Wayne High to get those repairs made so we can get those back on. Our needs project submission, so we're going to submit a project to do safe school entries that all remaining schools that do not have a safe school entry, that will occur tomorrow. Due date's Friday. I plan to get that done tomorrow and get that submitted tomorrow. So we're working with McKinley to get, to get the budget figures together and spent a good deal of today working on the documents. So we will be prepared to submit that here before the end of the week.
Have you got a priority in case you don't approve all of it and approve some?
They'll, they will. But we've got a, we've got a few sets of bleachers, mainly down at Wayne High School, that are blocked off for the current time. But our crews are finishing up Tulsa tomorrow, and then they will be moving on to Wayne High to get those repairs made, so we can get those back on. Our needs project submission, so we're going to submit a project to do safe school entries at all remaining schools that do not have a safe school entry. That will occur tomorrow. Due date's Friday. I plan to get that done tomorrow and get that submitted tomorrow. So we're working with McKinley to get the budget figures together and spent a good deal of today working on the documents. So we will be prepared to submit that here before the end of the week.
Have you got a priority in case you don't approve all of it and approve some?
They'll, they will call. They'll call and give a priority list. So I have not thought about that yet. You know, Benson was on our priority list when we turned it into major improvement project. And of course, it was the one project that they approved.
Probably that would be the next.
Yeah, so we'll take a look. Benson, speaking of that MIP project, McKinley was on site earlier this week and began their preparations for the Benson conversion to a safe school entry there. What that's going to consist of is we're going to create just a separate entrance on the left side of the office. Right now, it comes into the hallway on the right side. So we're going to take out one of the windows and put a door in. And they will have immediate access to the office. And there'll be a controlled area there.
On the left side of the office?
Yeah.
So it'll be farther to the east?
Yep, out there, we'll have to put a sidewalk in. And it'll be a new entry that occurs out there, and it'll allow us... It'll be a, yes, it'll be a, it'll have a cover over it, and it'll be ADA accessible when we do it too, which will be nice.
Now, does it have a bathroom on that side, or is that just another little room?
The office does, and that is where it's going.
So it'll...
Bathroom will remain.
Oh, okay.
But there's like a copy room there.
Yeah.
The copy room will turn into the, to the, what they call the holding space.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that was my old bathroom when I was down there. That's the assistant principal's.
The final thing I'll mention, CK Elementary School, the alumni gym. Neighbor Gal is working with the city of Kenova regarding, regarding the hooking to the water system to do the fire suppression. And we had good news on that. The city had found a, they had got a plan together where our access was going to be much easier. And it could save some money on the project. And so that, all that's underway. Neighbor Gal's working with them on it. I really don't have any details at this point, but we're getting close to having some designs that we can bring in and let you see.
Great.
And that's all I have at this point.
Okay, thank you. No delegations this evening. We can move on to our superintendent reports.
Okay, first up, first up is the permanent improvement budget, so that there's in your folder. You have the budget. I'm going to let you take a look at that. If you'll take a minute and just look it over, and then I'll go over it with you. So our projected revenue, Jeb and I worked on this last week. Our projected revenue is $673,628. That's a conservative estimate. Jeb thinks it's likely to come in a little bit higher than that, maybe up closer to $800,000. But that's the number that we used in this planning.
Okay.
So we already have current or committed expenses that have been spent from our permanent improvement account. That included the roofing project at LaVelez. That includes the MIP work that's been done at Wayne Elementary School. That includes some of the design work from the needs project out at Buffalo, where we're paying our share of the bill there. And that included asphalt on the playground down at Wayne Elementary School to expand ADA accessibility. And then the next line down, so that's $162,000, that's already accounted for. The next line down is what we have planned for the year. And you'll see that that amount, the total amount, is $505,000. And then your second box gives you an idea of what we're planning on spending for the year. So first up is the Benson MIP project, the safe school entry. That was largely funded by the state.
Right.
We did commit a small amount of dollars to it, $7,000, which you see here. The Sarita Kenova Elementary Major Improvement Project was more of a commitment. That's considerable more money coming in from the state. About $900,000 is coming in for the state for that project. Our commitment is $135,000. Architect and Construction Management Services for Buffalo K through eight. So as we get heavily into the design phase, we're going to have more expenses coming in from the architects and construction management services. So we've estimated that our share to be somewhere around $100,000 for the year. And that's probably overestimating, but I just wanted to hold that money, just if necessary. Next down is our Wayne Elementary Major Improvement Project. This is the payoff. So we have paid everything up to this point. You remember that was, gosh, I'm thinking it was a $1.9 million project. We've got $188,000 left to pay off on that project. The Wayne Elementary Pre-K Playground. We've put the pre-K rooms there, but now we have to, we have to do a playground there. And so Lattice is a local company that's going to come down and move the playground equipment from the existing playground down to the elementary school. So our initial build there is going to be $15,000. There might be some additional costs at a later time, but that's, that's worth it.
We can't do it ourselves because it'd have to be pre-approved through the state or something.
You've got to have a licensed playground person that does that work, that does the installation. Facility buildings at Crum and Fort Gay. So on your agenda tonight, there's a PO for some concrete. We're going to try to get concession areas for Crum and Fort Gay like we did out at Buffalo for those two sites. So we've estimated about $30,000 per for that. So that'd be a total of about $60,000. And that gives us our total planned expenditures of around $505,000. So with that conservative estimate on the revenue, that leaves about $5,500 remaining in that fund. Now, if you remember last year when we budgeted for this, we budgeted about $300,000 over top. It was between $200,000 and $300,000 over top because we wanted to invest a little, we wanted to invest more funds than the revenue that was being generated into the buildings. This year, until we get that, until we get that budget in the block, I would recommend that we try to stick to the number. And then if the revenue does come in more, we're going to run into expenses, I know that.
Sure.
So hopefully that, you know, if there's an increase in revenue there, we'll be able to use those funds for it. And then if we have any, you know, if it looks like we're going to have a pretty good balance there at the end of the year, we can start some flooring projects in some of the schools. Or if there's another driving need, we can discuss it there.
Sure.
So anyway, I just wanted to share that these are the projects. Go in and kind of give you an idea of what we were into this year. Any questions regarding those items? Okay, we will move on to, okay, so we've established goals for the district. And one of the key, we talked at the last meeting that we would talk about enrollment stabilization. Before we get to the enrollment stabilization document, I want you to take a look at the packet of information. I believe it's stapled together in your packet. It's got the enrollment numbers at the top. Yeah, it looks like this.
Got it.
And the first sheet here is just a current look from today, where our enrollment numbers stand. Currently, the enrollment numbers stand at 5,729. Now, that number, last year, the head count number was 5,915. So that would reflect a drop of enrollment of about 186. The FTE number is, the FTE number is down 319.92 over last year. That's the most important number, is the FTE number. Now, I will say this, the discrepancy between the FTE and the enrollment typically is around 100 or less. Right now, it's standing at 300, which tells me that a number of those errors are likely to be cleaned up. And I believe that that FTE number's going to climb before October 1st. But I just wanted to give you an early glimpse of where it is. And if it holds true to all the previous years, that FTE number will climb considerably. And I mentioned last time, but like our virtuals, we have 45 virtual students.
Okay, 45?
Yeah, they're, and that's a rough estimate, but they're not, they're not included in this count right now.
Yeah, 45.
October 1st, they will be.
Okay.
So there's going to be some adjustments like that to help get that number down. But so I think we're going to end up dealing with a loss of somewhere around 185, 186, somewhere around in there.
Is there a reason why we didn't get the rest of the count, the rest of the pages?
I can, because I couldn't figure out how to print it.
Well, let's not go there.
I will email it to you. I will email it to you.
I'm sorry, Todd.
All right, if you go to the second page, now, this is really interesting information. If you go to the second page, there's two lines there. Jonita, those color of those lines are?
Orange and blue.
Orange and blue?
Yes.
Okay. The, the blue line is the total enrollment. This first page is the entire district. So on the left-hand side of the page, you see the population in any given year. And then in the right column says prediction. So if you'll remember, when we did our comprehensive educational facilities planning, they had a company that looked at the birth rates, and they projected enrollments until 2030 for all of the schools.
Yeah.
So that orange line represents what those predictions were at the time. And so this gives you an idea. You can see that our enrollment is down.
Yeah.
And we were projected to go down pretty much year, every year. But the, the number that we're down is slightly more than what was predicted, which is to be expected. So you see those numbers there.
Yep.
And then if you keep going, you are going to see school by school. So I'll give you a minute to go through those and just take a look. So it's interesting, Buffalo Elementary was just slightly above the predicted line. And so was Buffalo Middle.
Yeah.
CK Elementary is significantly above the predicted line.
Right.
As well as CK Middle. Of course, you see that Crum and Dunlow.
Everybody else is below except that one.
Yeah, everybody else is below, except for those schools mentioned. Eastland slightly below. Genoa is just below.
Yep.
Kellogg Elementary, there's been, there's been, you know, we looked at that at one of the previous meetings, there's been, you know, a drop there. LaVelez, it's pretty much right on the line, but they've been above.
Yeah, I know.
So they're hanging in there. Richard has seen a, a loss. Spring Valley has been well below where they were projected to be. Also closer to the birth rate prediction. Benson Middle has, in the, a few years ago, they were above predictions, but they've now dropped below. Wayne has consistently been below Wayne Elementary. Same thing with Wayne Middle. And I'm sure, but I...
Wayne High School.
Yeah. So anyway, those are the numbers. And so I know that's one of the key reasons that we wanted to talk about enrollment stabilization as a goal. So if you'll look at your board summary sheet for the enrollment stabilization. I had sent you an original draft by email. This draft has changed slightly as I've taken input and considered to think about, you know, some things that we ought to consider doing. So I want to focus on the page one, the six strategy pillars. Number one is the family experience and feedback. You know, we want to make sure, our students are our customers, our families are our customers. So we want to make sure that we are doing everything possible to gauge what the experience is like for families in the school system. So we've, Joe Bies and I have talked about a student dashboard for families where they would automatically have live access to their students, benchmarking, all the assessments that came in, any data that we pull, that we would have this live dashboard, and they would have attendance information on it and would just give them feedback on how their student is performing. I think in today's day and age, that should be something that school systems provide for families. And so Joe and I had talked about this. We've been talking about it for several years. And the state was working on something similar. So we've kind of been holding back because it's a monumental task. We've kind of been holding back, but we need to pick that conversation back up and move forward on our own if we need to. But that's something that we would like to do. And then we need to look at satisfaction surveys. And the big thing that I'm interested in is exit surveys, is when we have a student that withdraws, if we have a family that withdraws and they're not leaving the state, you know, if they're just withdrawing for another local provider.
Yeah.
We need to know why. And then we need to see if there's anything that we can do to help resolve that and keep them within the system. So when I say the enrollment retention desk, I'm just talking about a better control of enrollment. And I would like to be able to get an update on how many we have coming in, how many we have going out on any given day.
Right.
Just so we know exactly what's occurring with that. So that's item number one. Item number two, in researching what other districts have done in states that have had school choice options for a lot longer than West Virginia, one of the successful strategies that public schools have implemented is a portfolio of options. And in parentheses, we called it choice responsive, meaning school choice responsive, meaning that, you know, we're going to have parents that choose other settings, whether that's homeschooling, whether that's a micro school, whatever it might be. But we do have courses available in the public schools that they might be interested in. So the thought would be is to advertise those to those families to let them know that those types of educational opportunities are available to their students. And of course, you know, we have a policy that if you're, if you're a HOPE scholarship and you're accessing those services, there's a percentage charge that comes for those services just like the other providers' charge. And so anyway, we would create those options and advertise those in case we had a homeschool kid who was interested in aviation maintenance. You know, that type of thing, just to provide those opportunities. Item number three, we're talking, one of the big things is, how do we, how do we make the schools engaging as they possibly can be? And of course, that comes down to subject matter. And so we want to have engaging secondary pathways, and we've done a lot of work with that. So we have the aviation program, where we have students that are in class up at the airport. We have the medical explorers, where we have students in class at Cavill-Honington Hospital and St. Mary's. We're starting to look at this pre-apprenticeship course where these... We're starting to look at this pre-apprenticeship course where these kids could have a course that they know is going to lead directly to a career and, and to the apprenticeship program for the trade unions. We have the, we've started conversations with Amazon about their business curriculum, the problem solving lean six sigma program. That would be interesting, I believe, for kids. Of course, we have all our dual credit options through the Hurt Academy and Jump Start, and then the internship program, which you're, you're very familiar with. And so we want to make sure that we're emphasizing that those things exist and see what we can expand on there. But really, what I'd like to see is, is we move down to item number four is diploma endorsements. So in, instead of just receiving, you know, the high school diploma, and then, you know, you have your certifications that you earn and some of your CTE courses and things like that. But we would set up a system where a student could earn not only their diploma, but they would also earn cer- certain endorsements on those diplomas. So here's some examples that are listed here. So you have a college ready endorsement. Those be, would be awarded to students who took a certain number of dual credit or AP courses and earned a certain number of college credits. The industry credential endorsement. So students earning specific credentials in their CTE courses, that would be recognized officially on their transcripts. The workforce innovation endorsement, that goes back to the lean six sigma. If we would set up a pathway where, where students can earn that innovation endorsement. Civic leadership. So I would like, you know, one of the things that, and, and at the bottom of the page, you'll see a list of things there, the civics education, the financial literacy, the parenting and life skills. I think if you ask what parents are looking for in schools right now, those are some of the key topics that they want to see their, their kids educated in. And so I would love to see us do something with a civic leadership endorsement where we set up opportunities for students to pursue outside of the regular classroom and endorsement. So that could involve some work over here at the, at the courthouse. It could be setting in on certain activities over at the courthouse, the Supreme Court trial we have coming up. Just having them experience this civic engagement in different formats. We would have a prescribed pathway for that. If a student did that, they could earn that endorsement. Something related to the arts, we can do something related to digital IT skills as well. And then a transversal skills endorsement, transversal skills, meaning those soft skills that we constantly hear that the students are lacking. So we could set up certain indicators, including attendance and behavior indicators. And then again, some opportunities outside of the classroom for students to participate where they can earn those endorsements to go along with their diploma. Item number five, policy innovation and communication. So as we look at these things, you know, years ago, you used to hear about innovation zones from the Department of Education. You don't hear that used so much, but you know, if, in implementing these things, if we need to maybe waive some graduation requirements or, or embed some credits, that type of thing, we can always pursue in it.
Innovation, and that's something that Marshall mentioned on some of the smaller schools, we wanted to get the enrollment up.
Yeah, yeah.
So is that a possibility we could work with them?
Possibly, yes.
Okay.
And then something else we might want to consider as part of that civic leadership endorsement is giving students opportunity to participate in board meetings. You know, obviously as non-voting members and they would, some of the information would be restricted if it was related to personnel or things like that. But as part of that civic leadership endorsement.
I like that.
Having, having an opportunity to provide us input and participate in the meetings would, would be an idea. And then item number six, so we've talked about the high school level, but you know, what could we do to possibly improve the middle school level as well? So the idea has come up about, you know, possibly doing micro credentials in grade six through eight. And again, we're talking about, you hear about the gifted program and things like that. So we're talking about having, having projects that students can work on that are embedded in their existing courses that come along during the course of the year. And if a student is interested in earning additional credentials during their middle school time, then we could, we could create those pathways for them to do that. And create engaging activities for them to participate in. One of the things I would love to see is a literacy and, and, and book club grow up at some of the schools. Christie Gibbs at Benson Middle School was doing a book club at Benson Middle School. And kids were staying after school and there was a lot of interest in that. And it's not going to, you know, it's, it's going to help those kids academic scores, there's no doubt in my mind. So anything that we can do to encourage that type of activity. You know, we look at civics and financial mini modules, again, community participation, getting with elected officials and seeing how they operate in, in, in their roles, that type of thing. Give those kids a chance to experience that and earn those micro credentials. And then some STEM projects as well. So those, those would be ideas that we could use to improve our services and to really kind of take a step forward about with, with the opportunities that we provide. And so I would love to hear your feedback, or if you have any other ideas that we should look at, anything we should be thinking about.
I like, really all of it, really, really like some of it. What can we do as a board to help realize this?
Well, I think as, as, as we pulled together action plans for any of the items. I think it's going to be just supporting it with policy will be the biggest factor. And, you know, there's going to be some budget necessities that come along with it as well. You know, one of the things that we've tried to do is to make sure that these programs are available to students from all over the district. And you can't always do that just because of distances traveled and class time lost, that type of thing. But like the Jump Start program, we have students from all three schools attending. Well, that's a, you know, that's a significant cost for us. You know, we have to bus, we have to bus multiple days a week. So just investing those resources, I think is, is where it will come down to.
Is that going to mean we may have to prioritize some of these over something else?
Absolutely, yeah, this is a full plate. And so, you know, there would be some talks about what priorities are. And then there would be a, probably a multi-year plan to get it implemented.
I think your marketing, you mentioned marketing these types of services. Public school is now more of a business than it was in the past. So marketing is key and you have to serve.
That's what Michelle was talking about.
Serve your customers, yeah, exactly. So I think this is a good.
We have competition.
Yeah, yeah, that is for sure.
Any other thoughts, anything you would like to see considered?
Every time something good's going on, I don't think the public hears enough about it.
Yeah.
We've been discussing that. We need to figure out a way besides just our webpage, and maybe Facebook to get the word out to the public of all the good things that are happening in the county system and individual schools.
So our suggested next step would be to get our strategic planning committee together. We do that meeting annually to receive feedback. So, and that consists of community members and parents in the district. What we'd like to do is maybe in early October, take these six strategy pillars to that group. Get some feedback from them on, you know, if they see this as something that they want, and they're allowed to come up with something that, you know, we haven't thought of. That they would really like to see from, from the schools.
So these endorsements that you have on here, I mean, those are pathways that we would provide for students. And then they would recognize that on their diploma as, instead of just being, you know, a plain graduation diploma. It would actually have that endorsement.
It'd actually be almost like another seal on it.
Yeah.
I like, I like that idea a great deal. That would be a low cost to implement, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, and it.
Pretty innovative, too.
It would really encourage students, I think, as well. You know, we have students that are, you know, they want to be at the top of the class.
Sure.
So for example, your college ready endorsement, you could set up benchmarks there for them to earn that endorsement. That would include, you know, a number of courses completed, dual credit courses or AP courses completed. It would include passing those AP courses, a score of three or above. It would include the qualifying under their SAT testing for not to have to take entry level English and math courses, but qualifying to, to jump into straight college courses. If they hit those indicators, then we could declare them as college ready. And it gives them a target to shoot for. And it allows us to emphasize some things that maybe aren't all that clear to them.
You could even do like this, the plaques, you know, that they have honors, high honors. Do they still do those with the diplomas at the, at graduation? Do you still get a plaque if your honors are high honors?
Yeah.
Maybe you could have something similar to that for each one of those endorsements.
Especially.
Right.
And then we keep, we keep on hearing, we keep on hearing about the, the transversal skills, the soft skills. We keep on hearing that, that, you know, from employers and from the community, that that's what students lack when they graduate. So I'd like to set up an opportunity for them to be able to pick up those skills. And, and, you know, we're, we're doing some of that already with the financial literacy classes. But, you know, parent, on page two, you'll see at the top, the parenting and life skills is important. And, you know, we just need to look at, at ways to make sure that some of these basics are getting covered. The time management, the conflict resolution, there's basic home and auto maintenance in here, that type of thing. So kind of like 101.
What happened when they got rid of home economics?
That was going to be my comment.
I mean, really, yeah, home economics.
My comment was going to be, I may want to take that basic home auto course. We have civics courses.
I took two years of home economics, I'll just tell you.
Well, I didn't.
We know.
And we, you know, we need to get some student feedback as well.
Yeah.
So we'll do that through the advisory team. And then, okay, sounds like we've got a plan.
All right.
So we'll move forward. I'll let you know when that meeting is scheduled with the strategic committee. And of course, you all will be invited for that, but we'll do that sometime in early October. And then I'll bring those results back to you so we can discuss them here. Also in your packets is the LSIC meeting schedule, the proposed meeting schedule for this year. And so you have that information.
Okay.
And if there's any conflicts you have, if there's anything you would like me to move, you can just let me know that. And then the final thing that I will mention is this week, you remember when we were talking about legislation? One of the laws that was passed was that the schools, if they received donated signs with the national motto, "In God We Trust", that those would be displayed in the main entries of all school campuses. We received the signs this week. And there was one of the senators that had, I think was the original proposer of the legislation that secured for schools across the state of West Virginia, the signs. So I just, I was going to give you a look at those. So I think we got.
It's nice.
I think we got two per building. So these will go out into the main entries of the schools here in the coming weeks.
Fantastic.
And that's all I have.
Okay. All right. Getting my thoughts here. Okay.
Very important.
Very important. So any board directives, board reports? We did have our fall conference this past weekend. It was this weekend, yeah, that's right. I lost my days. It was, it was interesting, there's a lot of, a lot of information. But I think we've got some good information on the support systems out there that we didn't know existed. And special education training coming up for us all.
I especially thought the part where the lady was talking about, I guess she was from Marshall. Where, where kids were behind because they didn't have any skills and they were pretty well left on their own when they were pre-K. I thought it was interesting, she said, not only the, the emotional support, they need to be taught skills to be able to handle those things.
Right, right.
And that's something we're going to look into with our pre-K people.
The, you, you brought up the special education training. And Randy had inquired about the, the training that's required for all teachers. Because I know it's in the legislation, and we talked about this before, that the board is required to make sure that the teachers are informed in person.
Right.
About.
Specifically.
Certain specifics related to special education services. So that, those trainings were created by our special education department, they were shared with the schools. I believe the majority of the schools have already completed those in their back to school training. And the special ed department is collecting the sign in sheets to ensure that everybody has received that training. There is some professional development time remaining in the first semester that's going to be school-based. Meaning schools have the direction of the training that occurs on those days. And if they haven't completed it, it'll be completed then, but that's the point.
So I don't have to go driving around through the whole county individually, meet with everybody.
We can ask at the LSIC meetings if we, if we want to make sure that they receive the training that they need. That way we can cover on that basis if we need to.
I think we're good. I think everybody knew that you weren't going to be able to go around.
We were going to let Randy do it. We're just going to put him in the car.
He's a big time lawyer, he's probably more capable of showing that than anybody.
And I think you all received a email today that the next training, they've already sent out an announcement for the next training, which is November the 15th at Stonewall.
Actually, I have that here so we can sign up for it if we want. Anyone else have anything on that weekend? Lots and lots of information.
We got lots of information, that's for sure, lots.
All right then, no unfinished business, so we can move on to our new business, our consent action items. Superintendent recommends approval of the following action items. Additional items received prior to the time of the meeting may be added. Discussion and or separate action of the items may be requested by members of the board and or the superintendent. And I believe we have an addendum.
Yeah, we'll, we can go through those changes.
So number one is to consider for approval, the recommended personnel matters, pages one through three.
Let me, let me go through the changes with you. On page one, there's a middle initial that's added to the list of substitute teacher, teachers there. That's Michael C. Atkins. On page two, there was a blank on your agenda. This is a position that we've had a hard time finding somebody to take. And we had some new employees that bid on that. So we were going through the process of making sure that they passed their physical exams and, and all that. So Virginia Honeycutt is being recommended for that position. The effective date on that, instead of September 11th, it's going to be upon receipt of the background check. We do not have her background checked back yet, so she's not going to start until we get that back. And, but we do want to start her immediately because Eastland has been without somebody in that position because no substitutes are taking it. At the bottom of the page, you have Jessica Watts, that's a middle initial's been added there, Jessica D. Watts. And then on page three, there was just a change in a spelling under the request relief of absence. The very first name, the Robert Chafin. The very first name, the Robert Chafin. One of the Fs has been eliminated.
So, we're taking off an F?
Yep.
Okay.
But you know what? I've seen people in this county, some put one F in, some two. I can see where that's confusing.
Right.
Yes, I have a question. I, I've got a couple of personnel issues that I want to discuss. It doesn't pertain particularly to this, but they've been brought to my attention.
Okay.
Do we need to vote on this and then may request an executive session? Or how do you want to do that?
It's nothing, nothing, nothing with any of these?
Not directly.
Okay. Nothing that would affect your voting? Okay, let's take care of that first.
Make a motion to approve as revised.
As revised.
I'll second.
Motion by Randy to approve as revised. Second by Jonita.
Yes.
All right, any other questions or concerns on the current personnel matters that we have in front of us? No one? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Now, if you want to go ahead and, um, make a motion for that executive-
I would, I would like to make a motion to enter executive session to inform the board of a couple of personnel issues that's been brought to my attention.
I'll second.
Motion by Mark for an executive session to discuss specific personnel matters. Second by Jonita. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, is six fifty-one.
Six fifty-one.
Six fifty-one.
Okay, those online, we will, uh, the meeting will continue, uh, when we come back out of executive session. Mark, can you hit your button there? Get out the mic.
All right, I was back on?
It was already on, all you had to do is hit the, yeah.
Everybody green?
Yes, we're good.
Okay, can I have a motion to return from here?
Second.
Motion by Jonita, second by Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, it is seven twelve. Just for the record, no decisions were made while in executive session. So, now that we are past personnel matters, let's move on to number two. Consider for approval, the purchase requisition order in quotes, in excess of $5,000, and that's pages four through thirteen.
Motion.
Motion by Randy, second by Jonita. Questions, concerns, comments?
Question.
Okay, what about our addendum? Is that considered approval though?
That's a...
Nah, it'll be a separate action item.
Because there's no money.
It's under your business.
Okay, I'm through.
Okay, so, questions?
Yeah, the first one, the very first one, the license agreement.
What page number?
Amendment.
Page four.
Page four.
This is the online educational program they use for...
Alternative schools.
For alternative school students.
Is there something special? I thought teachers, I thought we had teachers that taught that.
We do, but they have, they have, they have kids in multiple grade levels, multiple subjects, so it's a, it's not an online, it's an online software that they use to assist them and that the kids work through. That the kids work through and they take tests on and that's how they earn their credits.
Okay.
So they've used it for years and it's paid for out of the grant that pays for the alternative school.
Kevin Traway.
That's what it is.
Then on the next page.
Okay.
The C- three Okinawa Elementary recaulkings of windows. Tell me that's to an old part of the building?
No, that's to all the windows in this school, so it was not covered under the original contract because the length, the time that the school has been opened. So you remember, we had water issues this summer and had to have some drywall tore out, we had some mold issues there right at the beginning of the year. The contractor came in, not this contractor, Neighbor Goll came in, and they recommended that all the windows be recaulked. And May Contracting is the one that did our window installation across the entire district. And so, we brought them in to recaulk those windows, but that's an expense for us, but it had to be done.
I wonder why that didn't last any longer than that? That school is not that old.
Oh, we had problems.
It opened in, it's eight years in.
Yeah.
Eight years in.
I asked the same question, but we tried to get it under warranty, but Neighbor Goll had already done it once, so I guess that we had...
And Neighbor Goll did do a lot of warranty work in the building this, this summer, but that, that portion was not covered.
That's all I have.
I just wanted to know like... These think pads, who are those for? Page nine, teacher computers, but doesn't say where or who.
Let me look, give me just a second.
Okay. A hundred and fifty of them, I think, yeah.
Yeah, so these are, these are replacement computers for teachers across the district, so it could be various sites. Yeah, it's just replacements, so we have computers that are aging out every year, they buy so many and replace just to keep it rotating. So that's what this is.
Gotcha. And page eleven, is this Deborah Kung-Fu Incorporated a new company?
Yes.
Because, why did they, how did they find that? Is there a certain reason that we're going there, Cincinnati?
The, the, yes, the Crum HVAC system is Mitsubishi was the manufacturer.
Okay.
There's, not anybody...
Oh my goodness.
Anywhere around that works on those. We did, there was a place out of Virginia that could work on them, and it was going to be about the amount of this PO just to do a service call at the store.
Okay, I was just wondering.
So we've, the maintenance department worked, Matt Stanley worked to identify somebody that could provide those services. This was the company that was found there, so this is the HVAC company and they assisted Crum.
I just thought, it was just regular maintenance stuff.
They assisted Crum and they assist, they've assisted at CK as well, so basically it's a, it's another, it's another alternative to Mason and Berry.
Okay.
By the way, those...
CK or Crum? Crum was Swope, CK was Neighbor Goll.
He's the one brought all the Mexicans in and stuff?
I don't know, that was before my time. The, but the HVAC system itself is like a Mitsubishi system and it's, we've had a hard time getting somebody that...
Right.
I'm sure.
That can address it.
It's just nice to have an alternative.
We use the same, same HVAC at CK as we did at Crum?
I doubt it.
I think it's a Dyken.
No, CK, CK is Dyken, so we've got that at CK and that's, those are much more, it's, it's easier to get somebody to work on those.
Mark, did you have a comment?
I just, did those units at Wayne High School get squared away and down there where they were having those issues? Remember I talked to you about it?
Yeah, I believe so.
And those parts that were taken off of that other unit were never returned from last year or this year?
Okay.
Mason and Berry taking them off.
Okay, I'll, I'll double check that. They had communicated to me that they had been returned, so I'll double check it.
All right, any other questions, concerns? And the two concrete pads on there are for the concession stands.
Yep.
Have we poured those yet or are those in process?
I think, no, I don't think so.
All right, any other questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. New business, separate action items, and this is where our addendum will fall in as well. I think it's on there, okay. Number one, consider for approval, the lease agreement between Judy James or Doug James and the Wayne County Board of Education for rental of space for the radio tower located on Cotton Hill Road, Moses Fork Mountain, in Crum, West Virginia, at a cost of $260 per month, beginning July 1st, 2025, through January 31st, 2026.
Make a motion.
Motion by Dennis, second.
Second.
Jonita?
We had discussed this before, this is for the bus radios, and so that's why it's through January, in case we can make the conversion over to digital. Randy had found some issues with the contract, so I think we've got all those corrected and ready to move forward.
All right, perfect. All right, so there's no questions, concerns with that item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Number two, consider for approval, the new policies and or revisions to existing policies for further administrative review, further board review, and or ten day public comment. That's policy number thirty-one twenty point one-two.
Motion.
Motion by Jonita, second. Mark?
We have to approve this policy annually and what it, this allows us to establish critical needs in shortage areas, and then if we need to use a retired employee for over the hundred and forty days, I think it is, that they're allowed the sub, if it's in a critical need, then it won't impact their retirement. So you have the this year's policy and the, I believe there's two identified subjects in the policy.
Right, mathematics and special ed.
Math and special ed.
Yep.
All areas.
Yep.
All right. Any questions or concerns on that policy? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Number three, consider for approval, out of state travel for employee to travel to Tampa, Florida for the, to attend a national athletic directors conference, December 12th through December 17th, 2025, and that is school funded.
Motion.
Motion by Jonita.
Second.
Second by Mark. Any questions or concerns on this employee travel? None? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Consider for approval, rescheduling our regular board meeting on November 11th, November 25th, December 23rd, May 11th, to the following dates, November 11th to November 10th, 2025, November 25th to November 20th, December 23rd to December 16th, and May 12th, 2026 to May 13th.
We'd already, we'd already discussed this, but it's just a formal...
Gotcha. So Dennis made the motion, Jonita made the second.
Yeah.
Just switching some dates around if all, everyone's okay with that? Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Our addendum under new business is consider for approval, the contract with Playmates to provide pre-K services to the district for the 25-26 school year, and that is under separate attachment.
Yeah, so you have the contract and the agreement, and then you also have a chart that just goes over details of the contract over the last three years. So as you, as you know, we had talked previously that we had had a deficit in the pre-K program itself, and so we worked to review the contract and to tighten up on the expenditures for the contract. And Jason is here, in case you have any specific questions, but just to give you an idea, if you look at the third line where it shows, and I'm looking at the chart, the contracted school year is 25-26, you'll see that the cost per pupil is $5,343. That's a hundred and sixty-nine students served for a contract total of $903,015.
Excuse me?
Before we made the reductions in the contract, in the past, if, if we would have continued with the same, with the same contract as, as has been approved in the past, that would have been a million and ten dollars. Okay, so it was a reduction of $107,199 in the contract, which was a 10.6% cut. And then there's an additional cost to the right, the $145,000, that is for additional special education aids that the district provides for students with high needs. That contract has been reduced by $14,000 over what it would have been if we were under old terms. So, total, we've reduced expenses for, for this contract about $121,000. Now, the reason that you see that cost per pupil, you'll, and I'm going back over to the third column over the cost per pupil, and 23-24, that was $5,053. And Jason has put on this chart on the left-hand side how that works, so, and that's the highlighted information that you see. So the state aid funding for that year per child was $5,945. Eighty-five percent of that was that $5,053, that's how the contract has worked previously. Twenty-four, twenty-five, that state aid number raised to $6,555, eighty percent of that was $5,572. For the 25-26 school year, the state aid raised to $7,032.47. So you can see the state aid, and that's per child, has went up over a thousand dollars. And so, we subtracted out step five, the adjustments that we made in the contract, we withheld step five funding, and then we looked at the positions that we were over formula on the service side and, and distributed that cost among the contract holders as well. And so, that, we reduced that state aid funding amount to $6,227 prior to taking the 85%. And so, when it's all said and done, the amount per child was $5,343, and as I stated before, that's about $121,000 deduction to the contract than what it's been in the past. So if you have any questions, Jason's here and between the two of us, hopefully we can answer them.
I guess the only question I have, it's going to pertain specifically to the, the Westmoreland facility. Do you have an update on that? And my concern that I've expressed a couple of other times is the utilities there. Are we still going to be responsible for those utilities during that, this school year?
Yeah, we are, we are right now, so the Fort Gay facility, the transfer has happened, so we are working right now to getting the transfer, getting the utilities transferred over to the city. At the Westmoreland facility, our attorney wanted to have the, because there's, because the building's split up and there's other entities that own part of the building, they wanted to have a survey before they did the deed work. That survey has been completed and she's working to finalize the deed, so it's moving slow, but I think we should get it done this month. Now, we had given, we had talked about the use of the building and had told Playmates that we want that program moved down to Kellogg, and that they had like thirty days to respond to that request, and then based upon that response, we would determine what we were going to do with the building in the future. I have not received a response. That thirty days passed as of Friday, so I sent in writing to them yesterday that, you know, I needed to hear something now. So by your next board meeting, we should be able to, should be able to give you an answer whether they're going to move it down to Kellogg, what their plans are. We had agreed that if they would move it to Kellogg, we wouldn't make a move right now. We would let them finish the year in the building, we would cover the utilities, et cetera. If they're not going to move, then that'll be up to board to how we proceed with that property. Okay. But one of the things that we wanted to accomplish, Mark, in these reductions was, you know, to make sure that we were getting reductions in these contracts to help with some of those expenses. we were getting reductions in these contracts to help with some of those expenses.
Well, we had to go through the state board, I think, to be able to move them.
Yeah, there's a state, state, what's it called?
The technical assistance team. So we have, we have a core team at the State Department that mirrors the same team that I have here at the county level. So we have a DHHR member, a state representative, as well as a Head Start representative to the State Department. That mirrors the same team, the same core team, so they're coming down to have a technical assistance meeting with us anyway. So we have the same discussion, depending on what is responsible there. We have that same discussion as well, so hopefully the same meeting.
When is that meeting?
It hasn't been set yet.
Hasn't?
Still waiting on the response from the State Department. Does any team member, any core team can have requests for the meeting. And a request has been sent to the State Department by one of the core team members.
Gotcha. We have to prompt them along.
As soon as they send the message, let me know.
Gotcha. What, if she decides not to move them, what recourse do we have? Can we just create one at, at Kellogg ourselves if we're under that fifty percent mark or whatever, whatever the rule is now?
So it's kind of a sticky situation. So their enrollment is down right now. We have just a little over twenty kids at Westmoreland Playmates. Their enrollment is really down, so we have plenty of space there at Westmoreland Playmates. So opening up another classroom would be really hard to justify right now at Kellogg because it would totally be taking in front of those twenty kids.
Right.
So I would have to have that technical assistance from the young. So we've got to go over the applications to come over to see if there's a lot of kids that are coming from childcare and the majority of those this year are coming from childcare. We don't have a lot of community-based partners that are like outside community-based partners.
Right.
Coming to Playmates, so not a lot of non-childcare kids coming to Playmates this year.
That's why we.
Are you saying twenty preschool?
Hold on just a second, let's, let me get this thought out before I forget it. So we can't, we can't physically make her move them because it's more of a childcare situation rather than a.
If the building closes, like if she does not, like however the building comes, she has either open up her own facility to house those kids. So she has space in her own building to house the kids and they have the requirements met for pre-K. Then she could house them there at her site.
Okay.
So she would either have to have two classrooms free to go at that time.
Somewhere.
Yes.
To do that.
And in the, in the same community.
Right, and what, I guess, in my mind, the board is who's responsible for providing those pre-K services to this, this area. So I don't understand why we can't say we have space in this building. You're welcome to it, we want you there, that's, because that's our building that she's in as well.
Right, right.
So what's stopping us from saying you need to move from building A to building B?
Exactly, and that's why I've been talking with the State Department, I think that's part of the technical assistance team meeting where we have that, that I'm going to be talking with them about.
Okay.
So that's.
So that team can.
And that's basically what we've said at this point.
Right.
And I've talked to the State Department about, so when they come in, I'm already relayed that message to them about the cost of utilities because we have to do budget sheets to reflect where our money is being spent.
Right.
So that's part of our expense, this goes on the budget sheet of how much money we've been spending on these classrooms. In addition to what contract base we have.
Exactly.
So we went above our contract and spent more money in those classrooms. So it's part of what we have to show on those budget sheets to the State Department of our contribution to the program, so.
So if we, if we shut down the facility, if we shut down the Westmoreland facility, then her option is to move it to Kellogg or to find another site to offer it there within the community. But I think what my question would be is, could we say we're going to offer a pre-K program at Kellogg through the board? And we don't, we no longer need this, we no longer need an outside agency to provide those services?
That's where it's really, really.
That's where the technical assistance team has to approve it.
Yes, because the technical assistance team can come in and say, that's not a possibility. So they have the final saying at that part of time because when the core team, the members of the core team here at the center, which is me, Jeanette, and Mary Olsen, who's the core team members, we have final saying on how things go. So we have a voting system, we have an impasse statement where I can get Alexander to kind of come in and help with that decision as well. But it still doesn't always go, so the impasse deals two to two.
Right.
They have to call in a technical assistance meeting and they have the ones that have to come out and say, okay, sit around the table and make a decision. Because unfortunately, the power doesn't lie past the core team.
Which is crazy because.
Crazy, because it's not much to be integrated.
And we're tasked with, they all, you know.
Right.
Providing the services, but yet we can't direct where the services.
Right.
Are provided.
Now, the twenty kids you mentioned, those are Westmoreland kids?
Some are and some are not. Some are childcare students that might be attending at other locations, just like open enrollment.
There's only twenty pre-k?
Yes, right now there was like twenty-three on the last count that I had. We had a couple of new kids coming in this week.
And that whole facility down there?
I had seventeen before school started.
And to follow up on what Dennis, that was my question that I had too, Dennis, so how many of those students that we're serving in that building that are actual Wayne County students, that their parents are Wayne County taxpayers, taxpayers? How many of those students in there are, fit that criteria that I just gave?
I'd probably say about sixty to seventy percent.
That's not exactly what I asked.
I was just saying, like generally speaking, we have about sixty percent of kids that go from Central City because they're so close right there. So they come here for childcare.
Little, little.
Twelve, twelve, fourteen, two, something.
Yeah, somewhere around that. It's hard to say because like I don't always have all the applications in front of me to review because they get the applications after me and then the schools enroll them. So I have to go through each one and see. I mean, I can do that and give you a number, would you like me to do that?
Yes, please.
What age levels are they?
They're all four years old, I have just a few three-year-olds, I have very many three-year-olds at this time. On that location.
Can anyone sit in on that meeting or is that just a closed meeting for those individuals?
I know Alex, Alexander already sat in on it, but I think I'll find out and see.
Interesting, just to be part of that process, at least see how it works, so.
I'll find out.
Okay, I appreciate it.
I'll look at those numbers.
But this is at least a start, it's a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars savings on that end of things for us. Every little bit helps, so. That's, that's a start. All right, any other questions or concerns about our contract with Playmates? None heard, all in favor? Oh, did I have it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we need a motion.
Motion. My motion and second are not on this page, so I forgot what I was doing. Okay. Did you make that motion?
No, I haven't said anything, but I will, I'll make it. Motion.
Motion by Janita.
Because we've got to have it.
Second.
Oh, second.
By Randy. All right. No other questions? All in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Dennis, did you vote?
No, but I'm, I'm for it.
Okay. All right, so we can move forward with this contract, four to one.
And then we have one more contract to go, which is the Head Start contract. So hopefully we'll have that on your next agenda for you.
So we can move on to our potential items for our future agenda.
We will have, the next meeting, we want to focus on academics and budget. So we're going to have benchmark results for you from the beginning of the year. And the ballot scorecards are going to be released by the state. And so we'll, we'll be able to look at ballot scorecard data as well. We do want to continue to look at budget items related to other areas outside of the PI fund, which we went over tonight, so that'll happen at that meeting. I want to start having a discussion about legislative preparation for the legislative session and maybe sort of getting our thoughts together, so if we do another invite this year, we can do that prior to the, prior to the session and, and have our thoughts together on, on what it is we would like to see. The Mission West Virginia, that's the contract where they do some education in our health classes. There had been some complaints that we had received last year, and so we've worked on an addendum to that contract. And I provided that addendum to you this evening for your review. But what it will allow us to do is to create an opt-in or opt-out, whatever we choose to do for all students. And that existed before, but this formalizes that process. And then it gives a, it gives a review of the curriculum for the district prior to. It gives us the ability to have the curriculum for parental review, if any parents want to review it. So there's a number of items that, that we've included in an attachment that they have agreed to. So I will have that for your consideration on the next meeting as well. Our request for proposals for school mapping is due to come down tomorrow. I'm not sure that we'll have that on the next meeting, if that will be within the next two meetings on who we would be recommending for this school mapping project that's required by legislation. That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else? No. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Go on.
Second.
Motion by Randy, second by Mark.
We changed it up, Randy.
I gotta get on my game there.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, it is seven forty-one. That is it, thank you all.
We're gonna have some fun when we can.
All right?
That's right.
Good deal.
Yes.